Get everyone's attention. Thank you all for coming today. I am not Joe Pack Covington. And unfortunately, Judge Covington is under the weather. He has had a stomach bug hit him. And in the seven years that we have had meetings that he has been judged, he has never missed a meeting until today. So this is a rare occurrence, but we do wish Judge Covington, we hope he recovers quickly, that he'll be back and that I don't have to do this. We want to welcome Mayor Jenkins and the City Council members that are here today. We feel like this is important, that the topics that are going to be discussed affect both the City Council and the Fiscal Court. This is not a regular meeting. Votes can't be taken. This is a workshop, and it's for discussion only. And how this will work is I'm going to introduce the speakers, and then from there, I'm going to pass the baton off to Mayor Jenkins, and then he will run the meeting like we do with our City Council, our Fiscal Court meeting. We only have two things on the agenda today.
No agenda.
Oh, no agenda. We have two things on our workshops for discussion. Thank you all. I'm glad to know my fellow adjutants are going to correct me if I say something.
You think we should start with the pledge of allegiance?
Well, we're going to get there. But I think that is important. So we will have a workshop, and there will be no votes taken today. And so if you would, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Let us pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Now, we're going to turn the volume over to Mr. Connor.
Mr. Connor will not say anything about agenda. I promise you that. Since the judge is not here, I'm going to speak after our initial presentation, but I'm Jack Connor. I'm here representing Scott County United. I'm representing your economic development, Department of Economic Development organization for our community. We're going to talk about our regional collaborative effort. It's been going on for a number of years. Ms. Andy Johnson, who is the chief policy officer, as well as the regional engagement director for Commerce Lexington, and who has been a significant partner with us as we have been going through this process of working toward a better community and a better region. So with that, Andy.
Thank you all. Good morning. Happy Friday. Really do appreciate the opportunity to come and give an update on the regional competitiveness plan to our leaders here in Georgetown and Scott County. We were here, I think it was a year and a half ago, to talk specifically about where we were headed, and really do appreciate the initial investment from both Georgetown and Scott County in this collaborative regional plan effort. So today, we're here to give you an update on the progress, some of the things, some of the wins, the things that we've accomplished this past year with the investment from our local government partners. I'm joined today by Katie Vandergrift. She is on our economic development team. She is our Director of Research. So if you all have any detailed questions, Katie's here to help provide those answers. So again, thank you for this opportunity. Before we get started, we have, the next slide has a video that we wanted to show you all to help give some context, because it's been a while since we've been here. But just to really recap, if you were at the regional summit in November, you saw this video, but it really does a good job of bringing you along in the journey, where we started, why we did this, and where we are today. And then we'll show that just to set the stage, and then we'll get into more of the update on this past year and where we're headed. So cue the video. I think you just click on it, maybe. There should be a... Yeah, it's... Sorry. I can keep going. It is a good video. There should be a, if you click on the slide, but this is technology, and this happens from time to time. Give it one minute. If they don't get it, I'm... Yeah, I think this, I know. Maybe. I know, now there's anticipation. I hope this lives up to the buildup. Well, maybe we can show it at the end if... We'll just go on.
We've decided it's the way to go. One, two, three, one, two, three.
Okay. Okay, we can, we'll work on it. We can show it at the end, we'll do that, because it is a good recap. But just to remind everyone, when we started this effort, this was a collaboration of regional leaders across the nine counties. Business and government came together to really look, a couple of years ago, to look at where we were as a region economically, what were our strengths, what were our challenges, you know, what were some of those common things that if we worked on these things together, we could all see wins. So if we can go to the next slide, I'll just remind everyone of what those measurable goals, the three overarching goals of this strategic plan, really are simple. It is to increase jobs, good-paying jobs, in the region, and it's also to attract and retain the talent that we need to support those industries. And then from an advocacy standpoint, just being coordinated in trying to attract state, federal investments to help support those goals. So those are the high-level goals of the plan. Now, the next slide shows you, just a reminder, these were the seven action items that the regional leaders determined, if we worked on these things together, we could all see mutually beneficial wins, and that if we did these things together, we could have greater impact than if we all tried to do these things alone. So these were the seven items, and we, the regional brand identity, a lot of these things involve marketing, trying to be more collaborative on how we're marketing as a region to, for job attraction and for talent attraction. So the way, if we go to the next slide, the way we divide those seven action items internally at Commerce Lexington, and we are just the administrative backbone. I call this, my grandfather had border collies growing up, and we're just trying to keep us all moving in the same direction. So we try to do that, but we cannot do this. This really is a team effort between our business leaders, our education leaders, our economic development professionals, tourism partners, chamber leaders, local governments. Without everyone at the table contributing to this, it cannot happen. We are just here to try to make sure we're staying the course, that we are organized, and that we're all holding ourselves accountable to these goals. So internally, we divide these into talent and workforce, economic development, and into public policy. So we'll go to the next slide and just recap the 2024, we consider them wins. I mean, I went to Georgetown College, I played basketball, so I like to see wins. And this is the way for this past year that we are showing that to our stakeholders. So we have launched this fall a new talent attraction website. It is a live-work-play website, 30 pages of content. It is profiling, it's a one-stop shop that really profiles the nine-county region, if you wanted to work here, if you wanted to live here, if you wanted to have fun and play here. All of the information is in one location that's easy for people to find. It's got a cost of living calculator to compare, how we compare to other cities across the country. There's a regional map. Key industries are profiled, and there's a jobs board. If companies are posting on Indeed in the region, their jobs are being listed there. In addition to that, to get eyeballs onto this website, we have launched a new paid talent attraction campaign, and we are targeting what we're calling warm audiences, really the best bang for our buck, and that would be the alumni of our 10 colleges and universities here in the region, as well as tourists, people that have visited here or prospective tourists that are looking at key websites in the region of those tourism amenities. With big data and your phones, you can track people and deliver them targeted content, and we're really trying to take advantage and leverage those, that type of advertising. In addition to that, we've also created a resource hub where there's the brand identity, talent attraction resources, that our stakeholders can download and use those. So whether you're an economic development professional like Jack, you're a tourism partner, you're a business, higher education, this is a place where you can have access to resources that you can use when you're trying to attract, retain people or businesses. So the next slide shows you really the results of the campaign, because we're all concerned about, okay, how do we know we're being successful? Is our investment working? And so we launched the website and the digital campaign this fall. So October 1, we started running the digital ads, and here are the first results from that point until the end of January. So what you will see is we have over 1.0 million unique impressions. That means a new person, a new individual saw an ad about Greater Lex. It could have been a live ad, it could have been a work ad. You can see some of the examples of what people would be seeing on their phones or on their computers. But we've also reached 3.5 million people with impressions. So it could be the same person seeing an ad a couple of times, but it's still, the reach is getting out there. And so from that, 20,000 people have visited the Greater Lex, lookatlex.com website, and we can see through the 78,000, they're engaging with the site, so they may be coming back to it multiple times to check things. And so the live and the work pages are the most viewed, and then what we've seen so far is that more than 300 people have actually gone to the job site and clicked on a job posting on Indeed and moved on to Indeed. So once they get to that point, it's harder for us to track it, but we are seeing that path of them looking at jobs in the region, which is one of the goals of this plan. The next slide really gives you an overview of where we would like to head this year with continued investment in the plan. So we want to continue to enhance the talent attraction website, to be working alongside our chamber and our tourism partners, our economic development partners, just refining that content, making sure it's targeted and that we're really profiling the right things in our communities. We are going to launch a Phase Two, where we're going to develop out a community quiz, so someone could go on the site and they can fill out a survey that really asks them some questions about what they're looking for, from where they would want to live, and then from there, it would profile different counties, cities, communities, neighborhoods in the region. So that's something we're going to be working with Jack and our partners on, to make sure that when we are listing Scott County, Georgetown, that we're doing that appropriately, so that those quiz results may be profiling your community uniquely to someone who's looking to locate in the region. In addition to that, we're going to be further developing out county-specific pages to give you all more of an opportunity to profile your community and the unique assets that you have here. We're going to continue to increase that engagement through paid social media and digital ads, and we're going to keep using the alumni and the tourists as our target market, because they've already had an impression of this region, probably a positive impression, most likely, and so that is, I think, you know, we think that's our best bang for our buck initially with this campaign, is to keep going to those audiences. In addition to that, we're going to further build out our engagement with key stakeholders, so really focusing on getting in front of our education leaders, our HR professionals, those key businesses, our tourism, economic development partners to say, hey, we've got these resources, please utilize these in your recruitment and attraction efforts. And we're specifically going to build out a toolkit for businesses in key industries this year that they can use as part of their HR processes with new recruits. In addition to that, retention, retention, retention has to be a focus this year. We've gotten this website off the ground for the attraction piece, but now transitioning to working with our colleges and universities on efforts to really build those connections between businesses and students. So for example, this spring, we're going to work, we're working on an event right now with UK, a virtual event with businesses and with their career center, to make sure that they're utilizing the handshake platform, which is that platform that students can find internships, make sure businesses are on there in the right way, that we're actually doing things that are connecting them with students to make sure that they're seeing those internship opportunities. So the next slide shows you just a few of the ways that Georgetown and Scott County have been profiled through the talent campaign. Again, working with Jack and our tourism partners, just to make sure that we are hitting the right messaging for your community, the quality-of-life things through the organic social media, as well as the talent posts, you are being introduced through that campaign. You're also part of the key industry profiles, companies being listed on those sectors, and then your higher education assets with BCTC and the manufacturing facility here, Georgetown College, and then all the quality-of-life amenities that are here in Georgetown are also getting mentions. So take a look at that site. Again, if there are things that we've missed, we're still in that refinement stage. We want to make sure that we are giving you all the highlights that you need, that really do profile your community best. But again, we'll be working on that build-out of a county page, the community calculator this year, so it really gives us an opportunity to make that even more robust. So that's the talent piece. So now we'll move on to economic development. So with economic development, again, a lot of this is marketing. Marketing the region and your community is part of that, and it is really a both-and. It's meant to elevate the work that Scott County United and Jack are doing here on the ground for you all. It's just trying to get more exposure to your community, the sites you have, the cost of living, all the wonderful things that are here in Georgetown and Scott County. We want more of those job attractors to be aware of it. So with that being said, we did refresh the regional job attraction website to be a sister site with the talent site, and just to make it more user-friendly, more up-to-date, to really profile more of the things that national site selectors are looking for, making that easier for them to find when they're on the website looking for information about our community. Because the big, the main thing here is, when we're looking at our region, in order for us to compete against a larger metro, we have to go beyond the MSA, the Metropolitan Statistic Area. We have to say, no, we're actually bigger than that. Like, we're, the nine-county region is a 700,000 population unit, so we're trying to go beyond what they would normally be pulling on a data set to say, we actually have a larger workforce here. We have more job sites within a 30-mile radius for workers to travel in and out of. So that requires us to market at a greater level, to make sure that they understand that about this, this community in this region. So we've refreshed the talent attraction website. We also, the team has engaged in coordination with our Bluegrass Alliance partners like Jack, 120-plus national site selectors, and these are really the gatekeepers for the bigger projects, as well as key industry targets. And we're doing that through, we'd hosted three exclusive networking events this year just to try to establish those relationships and get them aware of the new things that are happening here in the region. And we're also doing quarterly emails to them to profile job sites, quality-of-life strengths, things that we think that they will be aware of, just to keep us on their radar. In addition to that, we've gone to 10-plus industry trade shows to represent the region. We were hosting, we hosted three leadership events this year with our regional leaders. Some of you all participated in those. It was the economic leadership training that we did here in Scott County, out at BCTC with Ted Abernathy with economic leadership, the economic development simulation summit to give people an idea of what folks like Jack go through, that process to market and sell our communities, and then the regional summit that we host every year, that really is that annual benchmarking event where we can all come together and see our progress. And then finally, just updating marketing materials to reflect the Greater Lex brand, to reflect that regional messaging, so people really do view us as the nine, not necessarily individual communities. So in your folders, you'll notice there's, one side has some economic development resources. There is an economic impact report that's, that profiles that regional data, and I just have to say that Georgetown, Scott County, you all are a major economic driver with Toyota and expansions that are taking place there. It is a huge asset and benefit for this region. The Toyota project really had, was a contributor to that capital investment number. So thank you all for what you all are doing to help grow the region economically. So the next slide gives you a roadmap of where we're headed for 2025. Again, just continuing to enhance the job attraction website, since that is our digital front door to job creators, to jobs, to businesses, to the site selectors. We're going to be doing new videos, a new campaign called the Nine, to reflect the nine-county region, that profiles those competitive advantages that we have in video format, is targeted towards key industries. Again, another tool that Jack and you all can utilize when you're recruiting companies as well. We're going to do a metrics dashboard, create a webpage that really shows what we're doing with the regional plan to market and profile that, because when site selectors and businesses see this level of collaboration, that in itself is a competitive advantage to see us all working together. In addition to that, just continuing to build out those industry profiles for our key sectors that can be utilized in the recruitment process. Again, just, we're going to keep engaging with those site selectors and industry targets. We're going to have an enhanced focus this year on foreign direct investment. Those companies tend to pay higher wages, they tend to invest more in... Those companies tend to pay higher wages, they tend to invest more in R&amp;D, and we have a strong presence of those companies here in the region. So really leaning in to developing those relationships this year and trying to see if we can make some headway with those types of companies is going to be a target. Again, we're going to keep hosting those economic briefings, so you all will get invited to those this year. And then just continuing to elevate our marketing strategies. And on the job side, we are going to launch a digital campaign similar to talent that , that targets CEOs, C-suite executives that are in these key industry sectors, as well as the site selector, so that they're getting digital information on their phone about Greater Lex to try to keep hitting them with content as well. So the final slide is how we're profiling Georgetown, Scott County through that economic development marketing. And again, you know, these are, these are efforts that are meant to enhance what you all are already doing. We want to work alongside Jack and Scott County United just to amplify the positive things that are going on in this community and bring more awareness to that. So really, it's three things. The Scott County wins are the strategic marketing of your regional assets to the site selectors and industry targets. So that's, you're on the jobs website, your properties are listed on that property database, that profile your buildings. We're also, you're included in all the engagements we're doing with site selectors, the trade show events, all the marketing, you're a part of that. And then if we get an RFI, RFP at Scott County, or at Commerce Lexington, you're listed in that. And we're feeding those to Jack as well. And then just access to any data, any reports, any of that economic impact models, marketing resources, we're here to help provide those things to you all to help support what you're doing. Now, my favorite part of the plan is the policy advocacy. So the third component of this is just really trying to work as a regional unit to identify ways that we can coordinate together to support each other in projects that help make your community more economically competitive. So this year, I think, well, this past year, some of the wins that we saw were the Kentucky Product Development Initiative. Every community has utilized that. It has really served as a catalyst to help get more job sites ready to go, or to finish out sites that you have available. As you all may remember, one of the key challenges for our region was the lack of shovel-ready land. We just didn't have enough job sites to meet potential needs. So this program has really helped accelerate that and the state investment, along with the local investments, and it's helped, helped really encourage regional collaborative partnerships as well. The other piece of this that has been helpful has been our work together to try to think more strategically about housing affordability. It's a challenge across the region. You all may have seen that the Kentucky Housing Corporation put out their housing gap analysis. And it was, I mean, 200,000 units for the entire state, but when you look at our region, for Georgetown and Scott County, it was 3,600 units. That was the gap right now, the current gap. For Lexington, Fayette County, it was 22,000 units. And when you look at the region as a whole, the nine-county region footprint, we were 37,400 unit gap right now to meet the, the workforce needs that we have. So we are continuing to work with our partners in the region. This session right now in Frankfurt, the focus is on advocating for some policy solutions that we think will help our communities, whether that's an infrastructure fund, things that could just come alongside local governments and our development community to try, again, like the Product Development Initiative, accelerate getting more housing in the pipeline. So in addition to that, we'll just continue to work with you all, with our state leaders and our federal leaders, just to educate them about the needs and, again, try to elevate those priorities on the list through our DC fly-in, the things that we do federally. We just hosted the Central Kentucky Legislative Caucus at the end of January to inform them about this plan, to bring them into the fold, to make them feel like that they are a part of this as well, because they are also a key stakeholder as we think towards 2026 and the budget process in Frankfurt. So that is an overview of some of the 2024 issue areas that we really focused on. If you go to the next slide, this shows you a map of, with the Kentucky Product Development Initiative, since it started in 2019 and then had those investments from the General Assembly, this is how it's impacted our region. 15 approved projects, you can see the leverage of state and local dollars and just really getting more sites ready to go across the region. So definitely has an impact and just is an example of the importance of policy advocacy at the state level. And how when we work together, local and state, we can accelerate addressing some of the challenges that we all have. So the next slide is 2025 deliverables. And when we're looking at advocacy, we're going to continue to be focused on those key projects. And we want to hear from you all, what are those key projects that you feel like are necessary for economic competitiveness here in Scott County? Put those on the list and advocate for those in DC and in Frankfurt to help get additional funding, to get those things moving. Whether it's job sites, if it's housing infrastructure, things related to workforce, transportation projects, water and sewer, those are all critical infrastructure needs that really do underpin what we're doing with economic development. In addition to that, just continuing to, I think, advocate for those business policies and just increasing awareness. I know there's a lot happening in DC right now, but the grant opportunities, direct funding through the community programs that really are the appropriation process for the House and Senate, how do we more effectively utilize those channels and bring more awareness to our local government officials about what those opportunities can be in the coming year? So that's one of the focuses for advocacy agenda. With that, we, I wanted to show you, I wanted to bring this back. Some of you all were at the regional summit, but the next slide really pulls it back to the key goals of this plan, which are job growth, good-paying job growth, and our workforce. And so this was a slide that Ted Abernathy with Economic Leadership presented at the November Regional Summit, where we are trying to, to benchmark our progress and see how we're doing. And so this shows you that we are growing jobs in the region. Our job growth is steadily increasing. We are right below the national average in those trend lines. And of course, you know, Lexington, Scott County, leading the way. So it's, it's good news from a job creation standpoint. We want to continue that momentum. You know, in that last five years, we've added nearly 18,000 new jobs here in the region. So very, very positive. Now, if you go to the next slide, our regional labor force continues to be a challenge. On that next slide, we, you can, wait, was that it? I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm getting confused. We're just not producing enough workers. We're not attracting enough people, and we are not retaining enough folks, and there are some demographic challenges. People are not having kids at the same rate that they did. We've got, you know, the baby boomer generation retiring out. So there are some momentum challenges that are national challenges too, but there are some things that we can do uniquely in our region to try to help address that. We've got 20,000 graduates coming out of those 10 colleges and universities every year. So even getting a small percentage of them to connect in with our businesses early and stay home will, will have a dramatic impact. In addition to that, continuing to work with our school systems on aligning those pathways to our worker needs is important. And then looking at some upskilling programs as well. So there's no silver bullet, but we've all got to keep our eye on this and try to make those tweaks to address, making sure that we've got the workers that our businesses need in the future. So finally, the, the last part of this is really talking about the resources that we need to support the plan. On the next slide, you'll see that we do have investment from our business partners, over a million dollars annually to help support this effort. Our government partners, the last, over the last year and a half, have invested nearly $600,000 in the plan based on that initial dollar per person formula. And we are pleased to say that the majority of the governments in the nine-county region, it really in this first year of, of the effort, have all come to the table to support it. They, they see the benefit of the items that we're working on, and we're very much appreciative of that and hope that you all will continue to consider that investment this year. The second, if we click on that slide, you can see the local governments that are, that are currently invested in it. We're continuing to work with other partners to make sure that we're getting that 100% participation. But for the first, really for the first year of this, this is, this is really impressive and significant to see this level of buy-in. So finally, in conclusion, we really do feel like we're better together. Regional leaders selected those seven action items because we believe that those things were low-hanging fruit and that if we did those together, if we resourced those together, these are things that could be mutually beneficial to all of us. You know, businesses and people, they don't recognize county lines. You know, they're, they look at regions for housing, for schools, for quality of life amenities, for where they're going to shop. I mean, we all interplay within this nine-county region. And so thinking about it from that perspective, from how the external audience is looking at us, is significant. So we really do want to be more competitive for jobs and people. That's what this is about. And it's about leveraging our individual assets together as a unit to be stronger in that messaging. Because marketing is expensive. And if we all tried to do this individually, it would have less impact than if we do it together. So just effectively pooling our resources really is a smart strategy and a smart approach. And we are committed to continuing to refine this campaign to make sure that each community is, is represented and is strong in the way that they are being highlighted. So we look forward to continuing to work with your leaders on that approach. So if we do this together, I think we can continue to make strides on our job attraction and our talent attraction. We've just got to stay the course. So we would greatly appreciate both the city council and the fiscal court considering investing again in this plan for 2025. At that dollar per capita ratio, I think you'll both did $25,000 each. Scott County United also put in 10,000 to hit that 60,000, which is, is that population number for Scott County. So with that being said, I will pause and take any questions that you all have. In your folder, I didn't mention this, but you've got talent resources on the other side of the folder, and it has ways to check out the locateonlex.com, that resource hub, if you want to, if you want to access that. In addition to that, it's got that report on the talent campaign. So if you, I'll stop rambling now and take questions for you all.
Andy?
Let me jump. Can I make a few comments?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I'm going to probably go drink water. Let me start your comments.
Okay, please. I did not, when I introduced Andy, I did not take delivery to you. I think everybody knows that Mike Ockins Smith is here. Mike is president of Scott County United. Some of the things that Andy has said, I want to go through a little bit. I'm not going to take a lot of time, but there's some things that I want to, I want to magnify that she said that are extremely important as it relates to what I'm doing. Those of you who may not know, she used the term Bluegrass Alliance. And Bluegrass Alliance was a group that was started in the late 80s, early 90s. It actually was five communities, five individuals, five economic developers, Winchester and Jessman County and Lexington and Georgetown and Madison County. And we thought, what a better thing to do was kind of get together and just talk economic development. I'll be very frank with you, back then, I played golf, so we would do a little golf at lunch too. But it was just that first step in having some sort of collaborative relationship with people that did the same thing that I did. I knew then, maybe not as wise then as I am today, but you can't, as Andy said, you can't do it by yourself. So that was really, really important. Our presentation today is really interesting likewise. She used the term no lines. And I'm going to, I'm going to kind of harp on that a little bit just, you've seen the maps that she presented, the PowerPoint. I can assure you, the clients that I have dealt with over the last 39 years do not recognize county lines. They cross them. I'm going to give you some data to prove that, by the way, just a second. They mean absolutely nothing. The cost of doing business isn't related to whether or not I cross that line or not. So it's really, really, really critical for us to understand that and what our base is. And I'm going to assure you that I said it in just a minute. Good example, Kim's sitting here, Kim's no longer with Toyota, and I love using his comments that he's done with me forever as a chair of the Business Park Authority and et cetera. What's, what, of the 120 counties, of which there are in the state of Kentucky, how many counties are those represented employees at Toyota? Last number he gave me was 80 counties. Here's a more interesting statistic. Of the 9,000 employees at Toyota, how many live here? What percent of those? Now, I know you've probably heard that from me. 35%. 35%. And that number may have changed a little bit, but I can assure you, it hasn't changed much. Again, county lines don't mean anything. People will go where they want to go. Now, I'm going to give you. I talk about this a lot, but I'm an empirical guy, so it's all about evidence. And the evidence speaks for itself. So that is January 2025. Does everybody get a copy?
Okay.
You sure? Okay. 2025, January. So without going way, way into detail, take a look at the number of folks that come into this community on a daily basis. How many go out? 17,287. And how many stay here? 9,800, 9, excuse me, 9687. Look at the counties at the top row of those that are coming in. Fayette, Harrison, Bourbon. There are some companies in this community, city and county, whose employees make up 100, 100% of their employees are not residents of our community. Those specifically are Bourbon and Harrison. And I will not give you the names of the companies. So that, I think, speaks greatly and loudly to what our patterns are in the region. We can't do it without our collaboration and our cooperation with our partners. That, that I just love. There was a slide that, that Andy showed also. It was particularly interesting to me because it showed an older Jack Connor, if you noticed that or not. But you can always tell by the, by the long hair. That was at one of those international meetings that we had with international consultants. It was held at the horse park. Now, I don't think that that individual consultant was exactly the right one, but three and a half, two and a half weeks ago, I had a visit from some international clients. They were Germans. They were looking at Lanes Run Business Park. I'm comfortable that those kinds of relationships that we're developing as a result of this plan comes to fruition. We were on the shortlist. It's a 45,000 square foot building, it's 10 acres with a couple of expansions. It's good, clean jobs, it's 40 jobs. We should know something in March. So that's, I think, again, the empirical data that suggests we're doing something, we're doing something right. Another data, statistic or data point. Thanks to Commerce Lexington, thanks to the region, there are a couple of companies here that came only as a result of that relationship that we have. Orbis, an injection molding company, YSPS, a stamping operation. I'll throw another one at you. Liggett and Platt's been here forever. Did you know that they used to have facilities in Paris and Winchester, et cetera? They did, we did a consolidation, got a KPI for them to consolidate their efforts here. Regionalism, regionalism works in this particular case. One other partner that was mentioned, and that's Andy, she just, Andy takes my stuff, just kind of like steals my stuff. So where is she? Sitting right here. I want to really point out the value that Lori Saunders and the Tourism Commission has for our partnership. It's critical. When she said live, work, play, I guess that sounds, it kind of sounds nice, but it is critical. And the work that she does for me and for us is immeasurable. Understand that tourism is economic development. If you want to spend some time with her, and let's just show you the numbers, they're fantastic. Multipliers are fantastic. It works. So now economic development is greater in terms of its, all of its efforts, you have to combine everything together. I, I have some other data, but I think question and answers may be better at this point in time. But I want to repeat what she said. I can't do what I do without the other counties. It doesn't work that way. And I'm thankful that, you know, without them, I wouldn't have any labor, that's for sure. But anyway, you want to come up back up?
I think, I think. Video working now.
Oh, good.
Close with that.
Close with the video.
We'll take questions.
Serving nine counties across Kentucky's Bluegrass region, the regional competitiveness plan is a collaborative effort aimed at creating a stronger, more prosperous economy. Public and private sector leaders are joining forces with key initiatives to make the region more competitive for jobs and talent. Despite Central Kentucky's exceptional quality of life, there are key challenges slowing economic momentum. Some of these challenges include increasing job creation and wage growth to the national average, attracting skilled workers to meet growing industry needs, developing more build-ready sites for business, addressing housing affordability, and boosting awareness of the region as a great place. of the region as a great place to live and work. Leaders prioritize measurable goals and action items across economic development, workforce, and policy. One of the initial successes of this plan is the creation of a regional brand, Greater Lax, which is a best practice in economic development marketing. The brand establishes a unique identity for the region, unites messaging around jobs and quality of life, and elevates regional awareness with key audiences. Another major milestone is the launch of lookatlex.com, a new talent attraction website that serves as a one-stop resource for prospective workers. The site contains over 30 pages of content centered around living, working, and playing in Greater Lexington, including a regional interactive map, cost-of-living calculator, regional jobs board, and key industry profiles. Additionally, our first-ever digital and social media talent attraction marketing campaign is promoting the region as an exceptional place to live and work. The first phase of the campaign is targeting alumni of Greater Lexus colleges and universities, as well as regional visitors, with the goal of increasing the local talent pool for employers. We've also refreshed our regional job attraction website, locateinlexington.com. With a modernized user experience, the site features vital data for site selectors and business prospects, highlighting location and workforce advantages, incentives, and available job sites. Through strategic outreach and messaging, we continue to strengthen connections with national site selectors and key industries, opening doors for new investment and job opportunities in Greater Lexington. Education and advocacy also remain top priorities. With new economic development education events and policy outreach in Frankfurt and Washington DC, we continue to advocate for increased investment in critical infrastructure, housing, workforce, and business climate solutions. Financially supported by both business and government leaders, the Regional Competitiveness Plan receives a total annual investment of $1.6 million. Commerce Lexington is proud to collaborate with regional partners to drive these key initiatives forward and strengthen our regional economy. There is power in collaboration. We are better together.
Do you all have any questions?
This might be in this packet, but I don't think so. You mentioned some numbers about four or five pages back at the end of your presentation about the housing gaps. I think you had three categories, the region, and Georgetown, Scott County, and then Fayette County, Lexington. Would you... If you don't mind.
So, on the Kentucky Housing Corporation's website, they've got their gap, housing gap analysis, and you can click a drop-down menu that shows that. Let me just repeat this. I looked at that this week, and for Scott County, this is total units, so they're including rental and homeownership for purchase. That would be 3,600 total. And then, for Fayette County, I just pulled that out to show them. It's 22,000 units total. And then, for the nine-county region, it's 37,400 unit gap right now.
So, when you're saying gap, just to be clear, that's a need that's out there.
That's correct.
Those numbers are a need in those communities.
That's correct. For both rental and...
People are searching, but there's a gap there that's not available. Thank you.
That's correct.
To follow up, we've talked about this often up here. It's important, as far as the terms of, we need more people in our workforce, specifically skilled trade labor, electricians, you know, plumbers, HVAC guys, all the... And, to piggyback on what Master Hosteller said, as far as looking at housing affordability, and we have discussed that up here, what strategies are you all... I know you said you're going to go to the legislature and look for funding. What strategies are you suggesting that we do here in Scott County to help reduce or actually increase affordability of housing and reduce the cost where people can get in to our community to come and work?
Great question. Do you want to say something?
Well, you're aware that the city has initiated a housing assessment study or survey, of which they have the data now, and the next step of that will be hopefully those kinds of opportunities, programs that can be implemented. I know that that's a long process to go through, but I want to jump in.
Well, again, as Jack said, we are doing an initiative and campus and whatnot, who's out of housing, direct and portable and for homelessness. They're collecting that information, and hopefully, they're going to bring it back to us soon. And, they're going to also have some strategies that will show that, hey, this is where your points that you need to attack to try to help take care of that.
I would add that, a couple of us were at a conference yesterday. Judge DeGugan made president on this deal. Housing Authority presented this, and they talked about some of the issues, and one of the major issues they talked about was in 2008, after the crash, that the smaller home builders left. They're all... They're gone, and then Kelly Corman actually brought up and asked this in front of all these people. It's maybe something you all can help with, is advocating for, there's incentive for home buyers. There is no incentives at the state level for home builders.
Right.
And, that's something that everybody talked about at the conference was that we need to advocate for incentive for home builders because the majority of your... I think they said 2,000 to 3,500 square foot homes are built by smaller home builders, and there's just not enough of them. They can't... So, we need to do something to start advocating for home builder, you know, for smaller home builders.
Whatever the number was that we were building in 2008 is still not there.
That's right.
And, hasn't ever caught back up to where it was back then. Thousands of...
Sure. The component of that is critical, and that's the process. I know that we deal a lot with some of Kentucky buildings on one of our chamber committees, and that seems to be one of the major issues for home builders, whether they're large or small, so processes go through. There you have to be, not let alone the cost of materials, but in particular, the process.
Well, you said 2,000, 3,500. I remember, our first home was 1,300 square feet in front of Bradford Place. I mean, you know, I mean, that's the first time... That's what the sizes that we need for first-time home buyers, but those houses in Bradford Place that fit that scale of 1,300 to 1,700 square feet are selling for $280,000. That is... There's no way I would ever pay you that money for one of those houses in the front of that neighborhood. I'm sorry, realtors, I don't mean to say that, but I mean, I lived in one of those houses. I watched it being built and actually did that. So, it's... My question is not the availability of housing and the gap. You know, a one-bedroom apartment here can cost upwards of 1,200 a month, and if you're making $75,000 as a single person, you're scraping by. You are getting no savings. You can't put into your 401K. You can barely pay your insurance. You can barely pay, you know, your medical after your deductibles if you get sick. How do we solve that problem? That is the problem that needs to be solved. I love the idea of incentives to homeowners, but the problem is, it causes housing prices to go up. You can't put an incentive out there because the free market's going to drive up when you're giving away free money. I mean, it just happens. And, so, we've got to come up with a way of how do we do it? If it's through federal programs like you're talking about, where we incentivize the builder so that they can build at a cheaper cost, so that these folks that are entering the workforce can be first-time home buyers and don't have to live at home or don't have to live, you know, in an apartment with four other people. So, and another thing...
It goes back a little bit, though. The more you build, though, the more the cost, you know, the more availability you have, the cost will come down because people have options, you have more competition.
There's a lot of availability here in Georgetown, though. I mean, land-wise. If you go and look at the amount of land that is zoned to be built right now, there's a lot. So, it's available. But, anyway, real quick, I have been up here 14 years now, and if you... I've been in Scott County since 87. If you ask former Judge Executive Judge Lesby, I hadn't been here that long, but I have... He had actually told me that one time. I'm like, "Been here 30 years, man." But, the regional concept of economic development, I love. The thing I don't want to ever lose is our individuality as a community. If you look in Louisville and the towns, when they put their government together, they're swept up into that, and everybody's from Louisville now. Nobody's from the little townships that are in Louisville. Unless you grew up there, your family is third generation there or something like that, I don't want to lose our individuality as Scott County and Georgetown as we go through this. So, from a culture standpoint, a quality of life, a tourism standpoint, that is where it is so important for us to keep our individuality on that side. And, I do want to say that you're right. Lori, the job that her and her group does, when I've called and said, Lori, I've got a big group, you know, 40 people coming into town, maybe more than that, they can't find hotel rooms. Can you send me somewhere that we might be able to talk to somebody because they're having a large event at the horse park? Within a few hours, we've got blocks of rooms set aside for these groups that are coming into town that are going to be eating and touring and playing ball and doing all these other things. So, a lot of people don't realize the amount of money that tourism does generate and what her group does for our community.
So, can I just ask a question on that, David? Jack told us about how he utilizes this partnership and collaboration. Lori, could you just, for a minute, talk a little bit about how this regional activity aligns and supports your local strategies and activities for quality of life enhancements?
I want to just real quickly say, I came here in '79, and I can never... I'll never forget coming across West Main, coming down to see in this little town, 8,000 people. So, my challenge from the empirical perspective is this. I come down that same hill, looking down, and I see the same thing, one exception. I see what she's done. I see what tourism has done. And then, I go out by '75, and I see the growth and all that stuff that is the generation of revenue, and I say, "It can work together. It does work together." Sorry.
I'm going to reference the numbers that you all were talking about a little bit earlier. So, Georgetown's economic impact on the tourism side is $180 million a year. When you take the whole state, we are ranked 12th. That's pretty doggone...
Can you include Scott County in that, too?
Yeah, Georgetown, sorry. Georgetown and Scott County, yes. It's kind of like you hear Lexington used instead of Fayette, so don't take offense. Everything we've got says Georgetown, Scott County, I promise. But, for the entire state of Kentucky, it's a $13 billion industry. One of my favorite things that Governor Beshear says is, "Tourism is the first handshake to economic development." Because if you do not have the quality of life that people want, you are not going to get businesses to invest. You're just not. You know, Georgetown is absolutely beautiful. We have a lot of things that other places do not have. I love it when you comment about how unique and special we are, and we need to keep our identity. I think that's one of the things that, at tourism, we fight for every day, to make sure that we do not lose who we are. I have always said, "We are a small town." That, you know, Georgetown is one of the best small towns, and somebody said, "You can't say that anymore, Lori, because of the number of people who live in your town." And, I disagreed with them. I said, "I can say that because it's not about the number of people who live in your town, it's about how you feel about your town." And, we have managed with our council, our mayor, our judge, our fiscal court, we have managed to keep that small-town feel. But, we always have to continually invest in those things that make us feel small-town, and that is, you know, taking care of our downtown here, right here in Georgetown, taking care of our small-town, you know, in Stamp ing Ground, in Sadieville, investing in those places so that we do keep that unique identity. I am so proud that you mentioned tourism multiple times. I love that. Thank you. Some people do not recognize that economic... That tourism is economic development. We kind of get left to the side because we're smiling, we're the fun people, but we may be smiling and fun, but I can tell you, every single tourism office in this state works extremely hard to bring people here to live, work, play, and I'm going to add one more, "visit." We got to get them to visit here in order to work, live, or play here. So, just add "visit" if you don't mind. But, we all work hard for that because we all recognize that Kentucky is unique, and I think we have a lot of opportunity for people who will want to come here. I'm so glad that, like I said, that she mentioned the tourism component, the quality of life component. We are going to work hand in hand. We've met with you, I think, a couple of times, the tourism, the nine counties, the tourism directors have. We've offered up all of our assets that we have, whether it's photography, videography. We have some capability of making our own videos and things in-house, which we are happy to do to help you out. We have just getting ready to launch our new website. We are going to have a link to the website for the Regional Competitive Group. We're going to have that on our website. We get about 300,000 hits a year on our website. So, I think if everybody in our nine-county, in that nine-county scope, if they would all add that tourism site, if they would add that onto their website, it helps you all significantly. So, I'm going to mention that when I go to my Bluegrass Region meeting today. I'm leaving there for... Leaving here from there. But, we're always here to help any way we can on the economic development side, even as far as whatever you need, Jack. I hope you know you can always count on us. You have been one of our greatest partners in recognizing that tourism is economic development. So, we're going to continue to work hard together with Jack and the region. Do you all have any questions for me?
I have another question for Andy. On the slide I think I liked the most, job growth, you know, like Scott County was second with like 1,400 and something, and Fayette's at 1,500 and something. What do we... What do we... What's behind that? How are we so much... You know, we got paid time with all these high schools and...
Expansion?
Yeah, like job growth and job...
I'll call you back to the empirical data, look at the community patterns. Where are they coming from? So, and give me an example. Lanes Run Business Park, average wage right now is $25 an hour. Where are those folks coming from? Not only have they come from other places, Universal Pipe, and it's a good example, came from Lexington, came back here, built 110,000 square foot facility. That's not really a location, it's expansion. So, the majority of the stuff that I'm doing right now is expansions, which is exactly what you want. You retain and expand. If you get a hit, it's wonderful. The thing with Toyota is just continuation of that reinvestment. That's where most of it's coming from.
So, nothing... Nothing, no big hit or just a bunch of...
My analogy is simple as this. Which would you rather have, Mr. Wilson? Would you rather have one with 100 or 10 with 10?
Right.
I'll take 10 with 10 every time. Gives me greater opportunities.
A couple of things, just to respond to some of your all's questions and comments. What Lori mentioned, and you saw it in the video, and I think we showed this a year and a half ago, but there was that chart that compared us to other metros and regions across the country. And, if you caught it, our quality of place, and that is the quality of life that tourism is selling, that was right behind Nashville, Tennessee. So, leveraging that, anything we can do to amplify those amenities, that's what we're doing. And, the fact that we're targeting visitors and going on the sites that we're promoting here in the region, people that are at the horse park, looking at that website, grabbing their data, and then continuing to serve them, live and work, and the live messages are our quality of place. And, a lot of that is embedded in some of the tourism messaging. So, the goal of this is really to try to create that alignment. It's not meant to replace what Lori's doing or what Jack's doing. It's meant to elevate and get more eyeballs on this community, too, as well as the others. So, I just wanted to reinforce that, like, it is off the charts. We just don't tell the story enough. And, a lot of other communities that we compete against are investing a lot more than we are in tourism and economic development and talent marketing, and we're just trying to get ourselves in that game as well. On the housing front, you know, it's a tricky subject, and there's not a silver bullet, and each community may have unique challenges. So, I can speak to Fayette. I mean, land availability for housing is a huge issue. We do have an expansion area now, but getting infrastructure to that, to get that housing going, is going to be an issue. And, right now, there's a meeting happening in Lexington where they're talking about, how do we pay for this? How do we work with the developers? What's the city cost? What should we advocate for in Frankfurt to help alleviate that? Here, it could be infrastructure, too, with water and sewer. And, so, I think it's being intentional this year as a region to say, what exactly are our challenges, and then what can we do together? So, if it is local planning and zoning, trying to do some education to figure out how those can be tweaked, those processes can be improved. If it is infrastructure needs that we need, and we need to try to get those on a list federally or at the state, get prepared to go and ask for that. Those are the things that we're looking at, but... But to your point, whether it's infrastructure or tax incentives, I think all things are on the table. It's just having those discussions as a regional unit and getting our priority list together. We just, it's all about being intentional. So we look forward to continuing those discussions this year with you all and getting that list together.
I have one more question. I think I'm done. So we heard at this conference yesterday, especially Eastern Kentucky. They are struggling to find ways to get their people to work. Harlan talked about they're working on broadband for remote jobs and pipe full. They're all struggling with loss of coal jobs and just loss of economic, it's horrible. I was looking at the engagement and it looks like all of the, most of the like engagements coming from outside Kentucky. Do you all, do we advertise or reach out to Eastern Kentucky to say, hey, we have jobs? Like we, I don't want anybody to move from their home place, but if somebody's in a situation where they need to provide for their family and they can't find that in Eastern Kentucky, that they can. Do you all actively go out there with that kind of like a, we don't want to advertise in our own state?
I think initially, we wanted to be sensitive to our regional partners and to start first with audiences outside of Kentucky. Not to say that they're, if invited in to talk to workers or businesses, that we wouldn't participate in that. But for the first phase of this, again, to continue to build that trust with members of the General Assembly, we have initially focused on outside of Kentucky. And that may be something to look at in the future, but that's just the initial step on this.
No, I'm with you. It's a sensitive issue.
They're coming.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, we just heard yesterday, over and over, they're, they're struggling to find
Right.
for their people. And so I know it's a sensitive issue, but because you don't want to take from them. Because then if you start taking, then if they have jobs, there's nobody there to work, so.
And I think that's just a question as we move forward. You know, again, as a, as a unit, we have our regional leadership council. That includes the government investors, business investors. As we think strategy, it's, you know, do we want to do those things or not? And I think that's just, we initially decided to be sensitive to that and just focus outside of Kentucky.
I have a couple of things. How many of these regional development entities are there in Kentucky that have formed? Are we unique in that? Is this a closed development group? Or, you know, is this it or are there people trying to get into this regional development entity?
Kim, if you want to take this one too, but I will say, the way we're doing this, there are other, Commerce Lexington has economic development. We do have worked informally with the economic development professionals through the Bluegrass Alliance that Jack mentioned in the nine county region. That's been going on for 30 years. From a policy standpoint, we have been working with our business and government leaders for over 20 years. But those have been informal efforts. Taking it to this level of intentionality, to have a strategic plan that we're all supporting is, is unique. I'm, I'm not aware of another region in the state. Northern Kentucky, I think, is working in this direction. Louisville has started this process with their, but to be doing, to have a game plan that we're all like, yes, this is what we're working across tourism, economic development and policy. I'm not aware that anyone else is doing this. We are actually talking at, in Frankfurt this session, trying to get the state to think in this way, where they're aligning economic development, tourism, and workforce marketing to be doing something similar. Where they're piggybacking on the tourism investments and then going back to those folks to serve them, live, work, come to Kentucky, because tourism is our front door. It's our gateway. It's their first impression. And then to encourage them to look at us further. So to your point, I think we're kind of a pilot project of can this approach work? And to see the success of it. And your question about the nine counties, there are other communities, I think, have an interest in being engaged in this. We have focused on when we're actually actively engaging with site selectors or businesses, they're looking within that 30 mile radius. So in order to get this off the ground and see that this can be successful, we have, we've tried to stay focused on that tight group that's been with us along the way. Not to say that in the future, we wouldn't consider including others. We just want to make sure that, that we're able to be successful with this first iteration of the plan.
Okay.
Kim, did you, did you want to add anything?
The only thing I would add is, this is so unique. And it's something that folks recognize as being a great best practice. From a site selector, those companies, it's, if you can bring all these folks together and they truly are working in partnership, that is one of the leading factors that helps them make the decision.
When I look at what we looked at when we were trying to figure out where to settle. And I think something that hopefully the economic development drivers, it is housing and, and jobs, but it's also education. And the educational aspect of Georgetown, Scott County is really amazing. It's premier. And to continue that partnership with the schools, I think is, is key for economic development, but also safety. Safety is, and, and our police and our fire and our WECO, well-being, physical, mental, all of these things together, people really look at that.
They do.
When they're trying to figure out, where do I want to settle? Where do I want to come? And so continuing to develop those aspects of economic development, I think are also key.
You're exactly right. Great comments. And we do have sections on the, look at lex.com website, that profile education in the region. Also safety, because when you look at the different quality of life indicators, those are right up there that people are looking at. So thank you for those comments.
One other thing about housing, Devin, maybe you can remember the number, but when Candy was making her presentation about housing, we had a lot of vacancies. We had a lot of vacant buildings. And I think if you go outside and you look and see what other communities, not just in Kentucky, are doing, the repurposing of buildings that are already there is a very creative visionary way to create multifamily housing especially. So hopefully that's something that we can look at investing in.
I was just going to say, economic development for dummies is what I like to read. And so when talking about regionalization for economic development, the way some of it was explained to me, because at first I'm like, whoa, you know, we're Scott County. We all want to be lumped in with everybody else. Was that this coming together like this gives us an opportunity to compete against a Chattanooga,
That's right.
a Knoxville, a Nashville, and Atlanta, and suburban areas. And, and like that, in the larger cities that are pulling all these people, you know, all these manufacturers from the north and the west. And it gives us the opportunity to come together and look at 700,000 people as opposed to a county of 60,000.
That's correct. Can I, may I ask a question of you all? Is that appropriate in this work session?
What do you think goes?
Okay. Well, on that note, if we're thinking about doing economic development education or topics, what are some things that you all feel like that we need to learn more about as a region? I mean, is it housing? Should we focus on that this year and profile some? I'm just curious to see what you all think is needed, what would help benefit you? If we looked at a topic as a regional unit or things that would help you in what you're doing here? And you can think about it and let me know, but that's some of the stuff that.
From a school standpoint, I'm, I'm, we're always trying to figure out what we're in our system prepared for. So, you know, what's out there when they grow up?
Okay.
So, and I know that's fluid. This year it might be one thing during COVID, we couldn't have enough nurses, nurses to cover the web. So, you know, what are the next generation of kids needing to get their feet wet in high school or technical school, the four hour, what kind of electives can we offer?
Okay.
That support the next generation of workers?
That's great feedback. Yeah.
And by the way, I really thank the school system. I'm part of that leadership thing for GMS now. And I could, and saw some of those pathways that are like 18 new kinds of pathways. So that's really, really encouraging to, to me in particular, to see some of those pathways that we have not done, as well as some of the other stuff in the high schools. So they're making some efforts. I will appreciate that.
I agree. I'd say housing, just affordability and getting it down. We also heard yesterday, across the board, skilled trades for housing, that even if they have a builder that's willing, willing to come to a community, they can't find people to do the trades. And I mean, I go kind of hand in hand with that, with
Okay.
what he was talking about. But that was the overall theme yesterday was housing, housing affordability. And even if you can find affordable housing, building, affordable housing, like who builds them?
Right. That's good feedback.
And was the apartments. I know I hear a lot, why are we building more apartments? Why are we building? But there was a need just in this county here, 24% more apartments needed today.
And to kind of go along with that, you know, you, you look around and there's a lot of people who don't want a home, who, who would, would like just to go rent because they don't want homeownership. All the, all the things you got to do on a home. Talking with Todd Johnson from Bluegrass Builders. And he was talking about that in this day and time, you know, people are downsizing pretty much, which causing some issues that, you know, if they can afford to stay in the house they're in, you know, I've, I'm living in a $300,000 home, but I can afford a $400,000, $500,000 home. They're not going to move. Because number one, they say to themselves, okay, why am I moving away from something where I'm paying 300,000 and now I got to pay more? My tax base goes more on that house? So that's another issue that he brought, because said, you know, in this generation of people, they're just not doing that, you know? They're just keeping those houses, older people are keeping their homes longer. And so, you know, even if they're downsizing, they're not downsizing as quick as it was done years ago.
That's right. Or for first time home buyers, they're not able to make that purchase until much later. Five, almost 10 years later, by the statistics that the national realtors have shared with us. I can only speak to Fayette County specifically, but the prices have increased 100% in the last 10 years, whereas wages have only increased 30%. So it is a national problem, but there are unique things we can do locally to try to address it. Was there, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, that's okay. So this is essentially a pilot program, this marketing campaign. So I guess it sounds like it hasn't really been tested or done recently. But have there been any similar marketing programs that have met with success from other cities along the size of Lexington, the community?
That, that is an excellent question. I, I don't know the answer to that, but I know that other communities like a Chattanooga, Orlando, there are other communities out there that are doing this. And so I can ask our consultant firm and see if they've got some examples that we can share with you all. I can say that they have been very pleased with industry standards on these numbers for the, the number of impressions we're getting, the website views, all the things that they typically look at in these types of campaigns. It's all been extremely positive. So it is working from, from that benchmark.
The consultants though, that you guys are using have done this work in other areas and built upon that success and development this year for this region.
Yes, that's correct. And they, and they've done it for a business or some, or, you know, a, a marketing firm or things like that, but not necessarily a community. So this is, we're marketing a product too, it's just a little bit different.
I think Ted Abenath, I think you talk about, I think the Greater Greensburg area, where they hit it, some economic development, you know, surrounding
That's right.
that area and bringing it in and formed this, I think, this type of approach of doing that marketing. So that they were able to kind of get a talent from other areas to compete, to come, excuse me, to come in and, and increase their job marketing and, and job, and even their housing, you know, from that standpoint. So I think, you know, Ted would probably, you know, him, Ted Abenath, he, you know, he could probably
That's correct.
give us more on that, because he talked about that in the economic summit, just how we were compared to everybody else. And he used that as a, as a focal point of, you know, they have really started doing this and they have been really successful at doing this.
That's great. We can get some of those best practices and get back, and share those with you.
I do have one more question for you, and I'm done, I promise. So what do you hear?
I have one more.
I know.
It's okay.
It came, it came to me. What do you, and this could be for you and Jack.
Is Jack still here?
What is the?
Okay, it's okay.
We all know, and you've talked about, the video talked about, and Jack's talked about, site selectors. If you, if site selectors, I mean, they get paid to say no. Like they're, they're looking to say no. So what the, well, they're, if you, if they say no, you're, you're done. So what is the number one, what's the top reason or couple of reasons that site selectors say no for our region? Like what are you, what are you all seeing out there that we can do as a fiscal court and a city council to say, hey, we can improve this to help increase site selectors saying yes?
My answer, that's business climate. That's it. Because all the other things wrap around business climate. Number two response to you is that now, today, site selectors have made their decision of where they may want to go before I get a call, Katie gets a call, anybody, the cabinet gets a call. They've done their due diligence, which is why the plan that we have now and we're fleshing out is so important. They do it. They'll Google it. They'll use every tool in their toolbox. When the Germans came, they knew who we were. They knew Kentucky. They knew everything. In fact, I was going to say this earlier. The only way, the only thing I had to say was the same thing I gave you literally. There were four of us in a car, the consultant was in the back, and the two company people. And I just gave him the commuting patterns, because he, because he wanted to talk about workforce. I showed him the commuting patterns and I showed him where the AMT building was at BCTC. And that was it. He knew exactly what I was talking about. That's, that's, that's my answer.
The three, the three factors that Ted, with Economic Leadership, shared with us at the regional summit, when looking at that, he said, sites for buildings, where are they going to locate?
Get that product. Yeah, I'm sorry, get that product.
Product. And then the labor force, do you have the workers that you mentioned? And then now it's the energy availability as infrastructure. So some of those are not within.
Yeah, every RFI we fill out, as an example, KPDI program, you know, can you provide this much? One megawatt, three megawatt, five megawatt? So yeah, she's right about that. I would just, but that all relates back to return on investment and capital investment, which is, is a business framework.
Mayor, you, we have any other, any comments?
No, I'm good.
So thank you all for your time. And thank you for the presentation and I appreciate you all educating both the council and.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your support. Thank you.
All right, our next presenter is Dr. Miller for the City Council and New Magistrates. About eight years ago, the state legislature passed this Texas state statute that said that needle exchange programs that are implemented in your communities have to be passed by both the Scott County Fiscal Court and the fiscal courts of the counties and the city councils. And Georgetown City Council and Scott County Fiscal Court approved a needle exchange program. And part of that included an annual report about the activity. And so, Dr. Miller, we're glad you're here and you can update us on what's going on.
Okay, yeah, so we did, we started, we kicked this off in 2019. And so this is just a one pager for you and we'll go over it real quick and then you can ask questions. So when we kicked it off in 2019, it was, it was really educating and getting our feet wet in what's the purpose of this, right? And over, over the past six years, we have really developed and evolved this program into being so much more than syringe exchange. And so I want to talk about that. The purpose of this program is to identify disease. And so how do you do that, right? You have to have something to attract people to come to you and entice them to get tested. And so that's the purpose of the syringe exchange, is they, they come, we talk to them about a lot of things. So I'll just go over our, our annual numbers for you. So the total visits in 2024 were 789. That's up from last year, a couple hundred visits. That's total visits, not total people. So new to harm reduction, this is new to our community. So they could have visited another syringe service program, but that's 42. That's also up from last year. And then our total number of participants that are in our program is 136 people. There was concern in, about the age in the very beginning, because it's anonymous and confidential. And that kind of speaks for itself, right? Nobody, people aren't really happy to come in and, and talk about some of these things. So it is anonymous and confidential, but the average age is 40. So there was a concern about, is there, are you going to serve under 18? That's a very rare thing. So you can see that there. We have, we've evolved this program into providing Narcan kits. So we've provided 292 Narcan kits. We've responded to 72 overdoses. That's in conjunction with our partners EMS. We have a system called OD MAP and so we track those. We've, we've got such strong partnerships with our police. We work closely with the Angel Program, Gathering Place Mission, Amen House, all, all of our community partners. So we, we do use, I want to make note, we do use retractable syringes. That was very important. And so we outline that in the framework. So we do use retractable syringes. So we do use retractable syringes, which keeps safety for when people, you know, when public works is out and maybe exposed to it. So one of the things that that we've evolved the program into doing is lots of outreach. Now, this number on number of events, it's low, and that's, that's because we had some turnover. This, this program is a partnership with UK as well. And so they actually provide a staff member that works this. We had some turnover. And when, when you have turnover in a program like this, you lose some of the trust with the clients. And so some of that's reflected in this. So that number's low, that should be much higher when we have stable, long-term trusted relationships. But even through those fifteen, you can see the number of encounters we had with people was four hundred eighty-four. So we're touching a lot of people and giving a lot, out a lot of education, helping people understand. And the other thing that we're, we've, we've been able to evolve into doing is a strong referral service. So we've got three of our staff members who are trained on Connect, which serves as a referral service. And so what I wanted to do was, no matter where someone comes into our system, I wanted to be able to grab them and give wraparound services. And so we're able to do that. If they come to us in our clinic services and we realize that they need substance abuse education, we're able to wrap them around internally. But we also, through Connect, are able to offer up additional outside referrals. So you can see on the referral services, we've, we have referred six people to substance use disorder treatment. We've, we've referred seven to recovery support groups. And so that's lots of time, that's like AA and some of the after-hours groups that are supportive locally. We had twenty-two housing referrals, twenty-five food referrals, clothing, insurance. That's the other thing that we're able to do. We can, we can internally sign somebody up for insurance. So lots of times, people that come in, they don't have insurance, we're able to do that right on site for them. Mental health resources and then employment. So it's also surprising to people that most of our hundred and thirty-six total participants are employed. So there's, there's a, a thought until you get into this that people that come into your syringe service program are not employed, but they actually, they actually are. So let's get into testing, because that's really the the purpose and that's, that's the mission behind the, the syringe service program, is we want to get people and test them and identify HIV and hepatitis C. Kentucky has the highest rates of hepatitis C in the nation. So as you see, we've identified since two thousand nineteen, we've identified five HIV cases. And we've also identified two hundred and twenty-four hepatitis C. Since the beginning of this program, we've also now got a nurse practitioner who can treat hepatitis C. And so when, not only do we identify them, we used to identify them and then try to refer them out, and we kind of lost a follow-up. Now we're able to link them straight into our clinic and begin treatment. We're not a hundred percent successful, because these people do have a lot of barriers. Sometimes it's transportation, sometimes it's just, you know, they don't see it as important, et cetera, et cetera. But we have twelve total participants who have accepted referrals into our hepatitis C treatment. And so if you put a dollar amount to that, it's about eighty to a hundred thousand dollars to treat hepatitis C. So we're saving tax dollars, right around a million dollars, a little over a million dollars if we get, if all twelve of those people are successful in going through the program. We've got other traditional referrals down at the bottom, you know, inpatient treatment, detox, behavioral health. And so really, the, this is what I wanted for this program, right? We kicked it off, and it was hard to get behind, right? It was really, we know that. It was three years of really trying to get behind, what are we doing and why are we doing this? But I think this is, this is a, a better encompassing picture of why we do what we do, because it's, it's identifying the disease, now we're able to treat the disease. For HIV, obviously, we don't treat that, but we do have partners in Lexington through Behavioral, it's a behavioral clinic. And they, they have resources to help those, anybody that we identify with HIV. So we don't treat HIV, but we do treat hepatitis C internally. And so, you know, this is, this is really what we wanted for this program, is no matter where anybody came in, we wanted to be able to grab them and figure out where their barriers were and what could we do directly. We have really done a great job of, of finding out what we can control in-house, like getting people trained on Connect, being able to sign people up for insurance, insurance is a big deal. And, and then, you know, outside of that, connecting with partners and and just knowing where to refer people.
What kind of treatment is it for hepatitis?
So it depends. It depends on if it's chronic. So some people, like, sometimes, these numbers also, we, Kentucky has the highest rates of hepatitis, of positive hepatitis C cases. Some of those are self-reported. So people will come in and say, I know I have hepatitis C, right? And sometimes, depending on if it's early on, depending on how they were exposed, sometimes the body can take care of itself. And so we'll, we enroll them, we begin treatment with our nurse practitioner. She really goes into a full, you know, medical exam with them. And it, it really just depends on how far along they are. If you, if you don't, if you get in front of it earlier, obviously, it's, it's a little easier. Chronic hepatitis can be, that can take a long time with medication.
So you mentioned, and I'm going to talk about, or ask about outreach, you know, you can do it at events. You know, I think one of the things you all said you're trying to do is getting a person who, who has an issue to come in. So you said you had fifteen events. What were some of the examples of those events that you all have as an outreach to get people to come? Because, you know, you, a lot of people are really scared and embarrassed and don't trust people that, you know, you're going to take all this information and get it out there and everybody in the whole neighborhood or whole
Right.
Communities don't know about me, and, you know, that might be something internal that I'm fighting and that I want to keep to myself. So what do you all do as an event, or again, an example of an event that you all put out there for?
To reach people.
To reach people.
Yeah. And that's a good question, and that's a good perspective, because that's exactly what we deal with. It's why it's anonymous and confidential, right? Nobody wants to come in and say, hey, I've got HIV or hepatitis C, or I think I do, right? So any event that we do, we always hand out business cards on how you can reach us after. And so we, sometimes we do testing on site, sometimes we don't. It's a rapid test. And so if, that's like a fifteen-minute test. But one of the things, so an event, we go up to Georgetown College and we'll just, we'll just be at like a fair, a student fair, a health fair. And lots of times, we're handing out educational material. And then our people are trained on how to identify, like, if somebody's lingering around or whatever, you know, pick them up and have a conversation. If it's a private conversation, hand out some, and then they, we let them know, you can drop in, you can, you can come and see us, however, however you need to contact us, right? So we try to reduce any barrier from keeping them. But it is, it's, it's, I don't know, I was tested, right? And I didn't think I had hepatitis C, but it's nerve-wracking to sit there and wait for that fifteen minutes, like, oh, my gosh. You know, what's this going to say, right? And so that is a really big stigma that we have to work around. And so our team does a really great job of just, if you want to do it here, we'll do it here. If you don't, here's, here's how you can contact us, you can walk in and and be seen.
I know it's difficult. I know. And I'm going to ask about, you know, young people. You said there's not as many, or is, are we, is it open that if we have some of our young people who may be, because, you know, let's say you live in a household where that's rapid, and that's what you see each and every day.
That's right.
So what is, that we're trying to do to maybe keep that person from being a part of that stigma or that household?
You mean if they're, if they're under eighteen?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, so it is anonymous and confidential. And so we, we, how we track it is they have a unique identifier. And so it doesn't, it's not your name, your birthday, any of that. And so we create a unique identifier, and you have a card and you have a number. You know, we, some, some people come so frequently, we, you know, our team knows them and others not. But if somebody walks in and they, you know, they, they're, they tell us they're underage, I think that's happened a handful of times at most. Because typically, we don't, you have to, you have to come to our syringe exchange, right? And so we don't, we don't grab them there. So that happens all of our, we will take anybody, no matter the age, and really try to do wraparound services. So we have people walk in that think they're pregnant at fifteen years old into our health department, right? And so that's a, that's a real big issue, right? And so then we have to work through, what does that look like? We do a pregnancy test on them, and, you know, those are services that we provide. So it's not so much in syringe exchange, though.
But so you don't really have an outreach program where you actually go out and try to target some of the, even in high school and so on?
And so our biggest, our biggest barrier right now with, with school students is vaping. It's a really big issue. And Senate Bill one fifty was really hindered us. So I haven't talked too much about, this is getting off topic, but we have a suicide prevention program that we partner up with UK and we fund. They go in and assess our students. And Senate Bill one fifty changed all of that, we can't access, because it, it asked questions that, that were related to language in it, in Senate Bill one fifty. So we're hoping to get that changed, that's some of the legislature, legislative agenda that we have, to try and change that. But that bill really hindered us from getting in and educating kids on vaping, sex, all the things that, you know, we don't want to believe our kids are doing, but they are.
Thank you.
I think that this syringe service program is a, is a touch point for a lot of the most vulnerable. But it, it has such expansive benefits. It's, it's not only compassionate care, which should be first and foremost, how, how do we treat the most vulnerable among the victims? But it's also community safety. You know, I know that we are now a recovery-ready community. I'm proud of that, and I think that these efforts are part of us being noted now as a recovery-ready community. We've got Corey Council, who is working hand in hand, I think, with a lot of these efforts and the Angel Program as well. But it's also an economic benefit. I mean, there's so many ways that this syringe service program is one small avenue to a larger expansive wellbeing for our community and, and quality of life. So I, I'm thankful for this program. I'm thankful for the leadership you've given to it. And I'm thankful that the, the county fiscal court and the, and the city council has been a partner in, in this program.
Yeah. It was, it was hard to get off the ground mainly because I, painting this up the way that I wanted to in the very beginning, just trying to wrap your head around handing out syringes is a hard thing, right? And so we had a lot of discussion about that. But I really do feel like we're fine-tuning a full encompassing harm reduction program that really serves, you know, it's, it's reducing barriers, and that's, that's what it is. We, and, you know, it, it's not just handing out syringes, and I know, you know, that, that was kind of the thought in the beginning. But it's, as soon as people come in, it's talking about all of the things, educating them on all of the ways. Because if they're doing that, there, there are other barriers to life. And so, you know, we're really proud of it. It's, you know, it was, it was difficult to get off the ground, but we did it. And I feel like we're, you know, continuing to add to it. Thank you for supporting.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for helping educate me, being new to this role and just knowing a little bit about it going in and, and all the wraparound things that go with it to make it part of a truly immersive program. One, one of the questions, based on, on your comments there, is you talk about referral services and treatment services that are provided. Are there barriers to the, the treatment methods in our community in terms of, you know, being able to provide the treatment drugs and those kinds of things? Are there mechanisms like, whether it's they're signed up for insurance that would be prohibitive of truly getting the treatment or they know that they need to get out because of cost?
Right. Yeah, so there was until the Medicaid changed. So when we first started this, you, there were a lot of barriers with insurance and Medicaid, even if you were on Medicaid, wouldn't pay for. You had to jump through a lot of hoops, and they, they changed that. And so that's, that's why we trained our staff to sign people up for Medicaid, because if you come in and you test positive for hepatitis C and you don't have Medicaid or some other form of insurance, then what, what do we do there, right? And so now we, we've closed that gap. We're able to sign you up for insurance, and then we start, we begin to work through that. And so every one, that's the first step for us. And so that's part of the reason why we've been able to put twelve people through it, because now we can get them into insurance and then move them, move them on. And then, yeah. So lots of less barriers, and hopefully that continues.
Dr. Miller, that, two or three questions, but one of them is, on the hepatitis C, is that, am I correct in saying for most people now, that's, and you're, I think you're talking about that, it's curable? Didn't used to be?
Right. Yes.
Right? So when you're able to get them in this program and you're able to get them cured, right?
Yep.
Well, yeah, I just want to make sure I.
And, and one of the barriers, you know, is also helping them understand, because they have so many barriers. The, oftentimes, the clientele don't understand the risk. And so, so what, I'm hepatitis C positive? They, they didn't understand. So now we're on that side, educating on, you, you really need to pay attention to what's going to happen, right? And they have so many other barriers lots of times, that it's like, ah, that's just one more thing I got to deal with, I don't have time to deal with that. And so we're able to say, no, we can get you signed up for insurance and we can get you through this, and that's one less thing, and so.
So another question or kind of a comment, I'm going to dovetail into a conversation about the Net Device. But I know you do a lot of referrals to maybe.
Everywhere, Isaiah House, Recovery Works.
Okay, because you're, you're, you're aware that the county's partnered with Isaiah House?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I knew you were doing that.
Yeah.
But it, I, I, how do you choose that, or you, you just give them options?
Well, lots of times, it comes down to their availability, like Isaiah House, Recovery Works, you know, the women's shelter. So that's a lot of times the, the avenue we're taking. I mean, we, we got, we got into a situation a couple of months ago where we had no availability. We couldn't, we couldn't send anybody anywhere, and that was a tough spot to be in. We're not there now, but, I mean, it's a big issue. It is, it's a major issue. So we try to give, we try, we just try to give the resources and, and then they pick, right? So oftentimes, it's, you know, we call it meeting them where they are. Oftentimes, people come in and they're not ready for recovery, they're not ready. But we, we will talk about what they will talk about. And then the next time they come, we, you know, it's part of the compassionate care, right? It's, nobody wants to tell us to lose weight, right, or to quit smoking, or to quit eating candy, or, right? We don't listen to that. It's, it's a version of that same thing, so.
So I want to bring it back to the Net Device. I'm hoping everybody in the room is aware that that program is up and running, including people are being treated in our jail. Unfortunately, our jailer had to, had to leave, because I'm, I'm not going to speak for him. But I think they've treated, not positive on the numbers, but about fourteen, twelve to fourteen people. And, and I don't know if anybody saw this, but on Wednesday evening, on the Channel eighteen, I guess it's six o'clock news, I didn't get to see it, I've seen a clip of it. They, they did a story on that. And they actually, on that, it's well worth watching. They, they actually, by their permission, they interviewed two inmates that are currently down there that were treated. And it's pretty, it was a man and a woman that were, I don't think they gave their names, I don't know them. But I just wanted to highlight that, because in my view, I, I don't know if you ever had a chance to watch the final fix that, that, which is, I think I, I might not have sent you the link, I'm bad about not hitting send when I'm sending stuff to people. But I would encourage people to watch that. That was a, that was a docudrama, real story done in twenty eighteen, they treated five people. That, that device last summer got FDA approval. It's only being used in Kentucky. And there's a reason that is, it's because for twenty-plus years in our past, Kentucky has been, in particular, the Isaiah House, they have always made their facility available in a partnership to do studies and trials, trying to get FDA approval. There's actually been, I'm not sure of the exact number, but back last year, a little over a year ago, when we were looking at partnering with the Net Device folks, the founder of the Isaiah House, I think, said, he told us that three to five hundred people in the past ten or fifteen years have been treated with that device. It's got an incredible success rate, and I would encourage our community to, to be aware of the fact that the court has already committed to treating thirty-four Scott County, Scott County.
Well, and we, I haven't watched that movie, but we, the lady that I met in the meeting that we had upstairs, we've linked her up with, I, I got her in my syringe, syringe, syringe exchange staff. And so they're talking. So I don't know, you know, I don't get in the weeds that much, but I know they're connected. Is it Dana?
You mean with the Net Device folks? Ah, there's two or three people.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they're connected, and they're, so they're aware, and they're, I don't always get those fine details, but after that meeting, I, I connected with her.
So the program that's going on in our jail, they're actually, the Net Device folks are coming there. It's a three to five, some folks, I think, take seven days. But if you watch that Channel eighteen link from Wednesday night, I think it was Wednesday night, if you, if you catch that. night, if you, if you catch that program, those two inmates say two things that were in common. And I know several people personally that have been treated. The first guy in Kentucky to get treated after FDA approval was a homeless guy from Scott County. And so, quite frankly, we've helped, my wife and I have been helping him a lot and he's now got a really good job and got his own apartment. He was homeless when we met him at Wendy's back last summer. And so, we just built a relationship with him. But he shared the very same thing the day he got done with the treatment as those two folks on that, on that clip from Channel 18. And here it is. The first thing that happened to him was within just a few hours. For him, it was 30 minutes. The withdrawals were almost nothing. They weren't completely gone. But that's the first obstacle. So, I found out, because I've met a lot of people now in the last year or so, because we're, we're helping other people as well. And that's what these folks, I really, you know how I feel about the needle exchange and I have softened, by the way. But my concern was the age. I was that person. I still am concerned about underage children in that, but I, but I get it. And so, I'm appreciative of what you guys are doing, because you are there for them. I'm glad they're showing up there instead of somewhere else. If their parents don't know what's going on, it's kind of on their parents as well. But one of the things he, he said was that relationship that my wife and I built with him is what helped him even get in the van to go down. I took him. I just went and picked him up from the gathering place in the parking lot. And I said, he told me it was snake oil. And I said, "What's free?" If that's what you think, it's free. Want to try it? He got in the van and now, the rest is kind of history for him. But his, his common denominator with those two that are on the Channel 18 was, he said the withdrawals were gone in 30 minutes. They talk a little bit about that, those two folks do. And the other thing was, you don't have any craving for it. Because, and they say that, both of them, if you listen to them, and if you listen to the gentleman, it gives his little testimony, he says, "I don't even want to smoke anymore." That's actually something that that device.
Well, that's the figure of treatment.
They're not approved for that. The FDA approvals, it'll take them off of methadone, Suboxone, many of the opioids, you know, methadone, Suboxone is an approved treatment, they can't get off of that either. That's what the first guy that took the, took the device after, got FDA approvals on 120 milligrams a day. He said, "I couldn't get off of it." You know, had habit. And so, this is addicting.
Yeah.
And I know they try and there's ways to dose them down, but this does, this is a jumpstart and a half. It's not the total fix, though.
Yeah.
They need the active care.
Well, that's the biggest barrier to people not wanting to go to treatment, is right? Facing the withdrawals, the addiction. So, and the, the piece with the Net Devices, you have to be inpatient, right?
Yes.
Because you have to be monitored.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's true.
And so, I think the goal there would be.
It's not something you can take home, no.
Yeah. So, we need to get in our inpatient recovery.
Dr. Miller, from your work in this particular area, what do you see are probably the top three barriers that keep people from coming into services that you all try to offer?
Initially, it's just trusting us, right? So, in the very beginning, we had to make sure law enforcement wasn't around on the days we did syringe service, because obviously, right, people have thoughts about that. And so, we worked really closely with, you know, because we're right between the sheriff and city police, right? So, we, you know, hey, on Mondays, can y'all just, like the sheriff will cut through and, you know, they'll go to their, through our parking lot to get, and that makes people very nervous. And so, now, I just, we really have a trusted relationship with, and word gets out very quickly. We don't worry, we don't have those things anymore, really. We're, we're kind of established and, you know, but in the very beginning, it was. So, you know, it's really just reaching people and letting them know that we're there and we don't have people that come in and are looking over their shoulder anymore, they know, because word on the street is, it gets out very quickly that.
In talking with Chief Allgood, he had, matter of fact, talked about this syringe program and talking about that, you know, now, we get out there and try to help those people through the Angel Program. But one of the things they say they do that, you know, if they come along with someone who they suspect of that, they often says, "Hey, you know, if you have an issue or so on, you need to do this and you can bring your, the needle exchange and we're not going to be there to arrest you."
Yeah, and we, we call Corey. I mean, if somebody, if we talk to somebody and they're ready for recovery right there, we immediately call Corey. He's picked several people up and we've, you know, we, we have such a, we just have a great relationship with all of our.
And Corey Council, for those who don't know who he is, he's one of the, you know, advocates for this particular program. Matter of fact, he came in because his son was, you know, had this issue and, and he really has, you know, had a lot of inside resources that was beneficial, you know, from, from the dad perspective of all the struggles that his son went through with this. And so, working with the police department was able, enabled us to become a recovery-ready in the state of Kentucky. He was one of the driving force that got that done. And we're one of, I think, now, I think, 12 in the state of Kentucky that has this distinction. So.
Any other questions?
Are you able to tap into the opioid abatement funds for this program? Is that something that can be economically?
It's very specific. And so, our staff members actually funded through UK. And so, we have very minimal cost in this, really, from a standpoint of operational, because UK funds that. But that opioid abatement is, it's, it was very specific in the beginning. I don't know if it is, if it still is, or they lightened up on, on some of that. So, maybe in regards to, you know, maybe some of that, but in the beginning, we could not. But we already had the, we already had the funding through UK, so it wasn't, from a personnel standpoint, that was our biggest cost.
Is there anything else that we as a city council or fiscal court can do to help you in this regard to move forward?
Just spread the word and support and the support is everything. Yeah.
Now, you have these syringe locations around the community, is that?
It's at the health department. So, legislatively, it has to be at the health department.
Okay.
Yeah.
Didn't they used to have some of these drop-off places where you could, you know, drop, do needle drop-off or stuff like that? Or maybe, maybe I would misunderstood that, so, you know, somebody?
We never have. And there also, there also are some mobile units, like in Lexington, and they'll like pop up.
But we don't have any.
We don't, mm-mm.
Okay.
No. We didn't write that into our framework and not that we couldn't talk about that at some point, but we don't have it right now.
Okay. Thank you.
We're in a really good location, too, like the bus stop in the Amen House and Gathering Place. So, it's really central to, we don't, in Harrison County, we don't have that, we're out and it's, it's, there's more barrier there, but right here, it seems to be.
Is transportation one of the biggest barriers, getting people to come in?
Access to care is, for access to care, totally, just everything, not just syringe service program, but the G-Town, that helps.
Oh, yeah, so most of them can come in by taking a bus, which is okay.
Yep.
Has that, that, that has helped evidently?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Miller, thank you for coming and presenting to us and we appreciate your time and all the information. Thank you to the mayor and the city council for us doing this together and I'm glad you